All right, today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. This is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is minutes. There are no prior minutes that were distributed, so any will be clear with those at a future date when they are distributed. Meeting mail, we've got a letter of interest from Deborah Reposa to be appointed as a Council on Aging member.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. My apologies. Letter of interest from Deborah Reposa asking to be appointed as a member of the Council on Aging. Apparently there's a vacancy there, and she's expressed interest in it. She's apparently active in the Council on Aging and what those responsibilities would be.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Reposa to the Council on Aging Board of Directors as a full-voting member for the term expiring May 1st, 2021.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. We've also got a letter of resignation from the Bylaw Review Committee. Mr. Le- Blank, Ray Le-Blank is resigning. He's served the town for 20-plus years and resigning due to health issues, says he cannot continue on that committee, so we accept his resignation and thank him for his service. I don't know if a motion's necessary for that.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment, though?
Sure.
In his letter, it looks like he just doesn't want to be chairman anymore, and it does say, "I would appreciate your consideration to remain on the committee as a regular member."
Oh, my apologies.
So I'm not so sure why it would take a vote by the Board of Selectmen when he could just vote out by the bylaw to change the composition of the board to not have him chairman anymore, but it does say, "I would like, I would appreciate..."
That's something they should work out themselves.
Yeah.
Why is this here?
I don't know.
They shouldn't be here. I took it as a...
I took it as a flat-out resignation.
I took it as a resignation, yeah.
Could we just make a phone call to make sure that this is his intent, that he would like to remain as a member, and if not, like, we just do it again?
I do want, and something I've spoken with Mr. Noble about, I do want to get the Bylaw Review Committee together and just talk about their role and what they're doing. I was a little disappointed with the fact, I'm on the committee as selectman, I was a little disappointed when, just prior to the last town meeting, at 3 o'clock the day of the town meeting, they were reviewing all the proposed bylaw changes. It just, to me, feels like something that should be done months in advance. So I do want to get that group together and just talk about what their role is and the timing of bylaw review and the process. So, all right, no votes necessary. Will you contact Mr. Le-Blank, or should I contact Mr. Le-Blank and find out what he... But we do want them scheduled anyway, whoever the chairman is, I thought it was Mr. Howcroft, whoever the chairman is, we'd like to get them in and...
Move it, the entire committee.
Yeah, and discuss, which includes me apparently now. All right, next item on the agenda, and I am still getting used to trying to navigate through this without paper as well, so this may not be playing pretty to the audience, but we're trying to be paperless and do it all, and it's not flowing very well, so I'm working it out. Our appointment, 5:05, Tom DeCosta, Akushnet Man of the Year. Congratulations on that. We wanted to bring you in and recognize that achievement, and there's a, we had, when I say "we," I don't mean me, I mean they, had a plaque framed for you. Seems we've lost it.
It's good.
We found it here.
Here we go.
The article that was in the Standard Times describing the Akushnet Veterans Memorial and the work you did there in recognizing the achievement. And, I mean, what you've done is created something in the Town of Akushnet that'll be here long after you're gone, and great work. And I bought a stone for my grandfather, I was very pleased to see that there, to see his name immortalized in the Akushnet Veterans Memorial, so thank you for the offshoring.
Sure. Can I watch out for this?
Yep.
That's our first team photo.
All right. We stare between the cameras.
How about if you maybe stand...
Brian, do you want to?
I'm too... Yeah, Brian, and two sides, leave out each side of the...
Average out the crowd.
Get the flag or something?
I don't know if we want to block that or we want to keep that in.
We want to keep that in.
Sure, can you get us all in?
You'll have to go out the window. Go out the window, take the picture.
Actually, that one's good. I have to give you...
Anything you want to say is welcome.
I just wanted to say that a lot of people deserve this award, and a lot of people put in a lot of time and effort to do this thing for the veterans, and I appreciate the Standard Times and the town taking the time to recognize me in this manner, but a lot of people put in a lot of effort, and that includes town officials, like the Select Board over the years, and the Park Board over the years, and, you know, the DPW. So, a lot of effort went into this, a lot of people, so, thank you.
Are there future plans for it, or is it where you want it to be at this point? I know there was a lot you talked about...
Yes, and so I'd like to, for lack of a better term, I'd like to put a storyboard up there, if that's the true nature of, you know, the term, but I wanted to put a board up there that explains why we did it, and then the companies who, you know, invested their time and money into it so that they get the proper recognition, so maybe two storyboards about, you know, just about what they're, why we did it, and who did it. And there's a bell, memorial bell coming. I already have the bell, and we're working on building the framework to hang that bell, which will be rung at Veterans Day ceremonies in the future. So, the clacker that rings the bell won't be there, but, you know, we'll take that out of there, so...
Yeah, the neighbors will thank you.
Yeah, there won't be, yeah, there won't be any nuisance, you know, but that's about it right now, and so trying to, just trying to tie up loose ends so that I can close the book on this thing. I hope not to have a 501(c)(3) taxes to do next year, you know, so if I can close the book on it. Whatever funds I have left over, I turn over to the town, which is legally acceptable, and that way, you know, it can be used toward maintaining the park, so.
Right.
And people can still buy bricks. We're going to install some this Saturday or Sunday. I was sitting on the 60 or 65 bricks, and I've got orders coming already. Still, they come trickling in one at a time, and so people can still buy a brick to honor a veteran, so.
How many, how many bricks were installed?
Over, there's over 500. We're approaching 600. Probably by the end of the year, we'll have 600 bricks in there, so, that's about it.
So congratulations on your Man of the Year, Mr. DeCosta. You know, I nominated you, as the article states, you know, your Man of the Decade, right? It's been over a decade worth of time that you put into this for the community. Big heart, you have a very big heart to do this for all our veterans, not just yourself, but for all veterans, and that's why we have all five branches of the military up there. You know, it's truly commendable what you've done for our community, and I don't think that we could ever pay you back, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda, if I can find it. All right, we're on old business. Explanation of the Police Chief's election process steps, what we're doing, how we're doing it, what the timeline's going to be, so our police chief has announced the fact that he's going to be resigning. Or retiring, I think is a better term, not resigned, retiring, effective, semantics. Effective November 2019. The police chief position is a civil service position, and for that reason, we're going through the civil service process to replace, replace the chief. We've started that process, we've reached out to the Human Resources Department of the Department of Labor, where we've signed a delegation agreement. They're basically leading the process, or assembling the candidates, and recommending the candidates to us, and the response that we got from them was pretty quick. We were told it would be an extended process, they responded to us in seven days, so we've taken that first step. The next step is to hire an assessment center, and the assessment center is going to do all the interviewing of the candidates for the position, and we've got an RFP that's been distributed for the, that will be the document that is bid on by the various assessment centers out there. It's a request for proposal, so if we're happy with that document, I am going to go to you, and if we're happy with that document, which I believe you generated, chief, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay. If we're happy with that document, we are going to vote to put that out to bid tonight, but I'll go to you, chief, and then back to the, back to the board.
Well, the document will hire a company that will aid the board in the process. So what this company will do, the chosen company ultimately, will rank the candidates, and will provide you a list of three candidates, and you will ultimately choose one of the three candidates. We have five sergeants that are on the job and that would be eligible, we have four that have verbally committed to partaking in the process, so this company will give you the list of three, three highest candidates. You have a, the process does take a while, so I would recommend that, you know, the sooner we get this out and moving, the better off we will be. They do give you, you know, a worst-case scenario, but the process, I think, will take about six months, so I would like to get started as soon as we can.
Yeah, I do feel like we've jumped right on it, and we're in a, we're in a good spot. I think we've been moving it about as quick as, as we can.
Yep, it's actually going quicker than I thought.
Yeah, I think we're in a good spot, assuming everyone's comfortable with the RFP document that you provided, and to the other selectmen, I'd...
Yeah, I'm satisfied with it.
I talked with Ms. Leonard today and Mr. Noble, and they said there was no changes made to the RFP draft, so...
No, I don't think there were.
From the council, so it looks like we're pretty in shape, so thank you for that, getting that expedited to the town council. I think that for the procurement of it, I don't think that we have to send it out. I think we can just send it to, at minimum, three companies, I believe is the process.
Correct.
So, once we figure that out, I mean, are there three companies that we would have in mind to just send it out to, or...
I do have three companies. Do you want me to publicly name the companies, or do you want me to send it to the three companies?
I don't think it matters, nobody knows the names, I don't think it matters, so...
I would make sure that it's local company here from Massachusetts as well, so that way, you know, you're dealing with local vendors.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Would you like me to put a limit on the response time, so that way it stays...
Oh, definitely, we want to keep this moving, yeah, definitely. Whatever's reasonable, but...
10 days to two weeks be good, so that way, maybe we have somebody that can set up for the next meeting.
Is that reasonable?
I'm not sure if it's reasonable, but if we put a time limit on it, maybe if that's the only thing that's on an agenda, maybe we could meet again outside of your normal, if that's...
Sure.
Rather than waiting a full month.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I see, no more than 30 days, whatever you think's reasonable. I mean, we want, we want good bids.
Correct.
We don't want to, we don't want to qualified bidders because we've set an unreasonable response time.
I think two weeks will be good. Usually, the, once you award the bid, there's generally up to 30 days for them to get their process started, so I'm looking to make sure we stay on the timeline.
If the board approves the RFP, and we pick the qualified respondent, responsible and responsive, the board doesn't have to approve the awarding of that contract.
Okay, so, any...
So you're empowered to do that as procurement officer?
Okay. I won't if you don't want me to, but I can.
Well, the board would choose out of the three that send back some...
The board could, or the board could delegate to the chief procurement officer, predicated on the most responsive and responsive to respond.
I think that would, you wanted to have it as a board decision, we can make it that.
I think it would be a board decision.
We could have the board...
Comfortable.
So, two weeks, we're going to do it, 14 days, as long as we have sent it to three companies, everything's legit. RFP would be 30 days posting time, right?
No, in this particular case, you...
There would be no posting.
I know I'm not, but if we were to be bound by it, we'd have to be done for the minimum 30 days, so, because it's not, and it doesn't breach $10,000, we could do it this way, so, yeah, I'd like to...
Could I, I mean, Mr. Noble's going to be aware of what the responses are, what the bids are. Could I suggest that when they, when they come in, you communicate with all of us individually, and, and assuming everyone is comfortable with the numbers we've got, that maybe we can, you know, verbally, each individually, tell him that that's fine, and we would not have to meet as a group...
Correct.
To discuss that, but communicate with each of us individually, and we'll keep it moving along. We don't have to post a meeting, we won't lose two days to do that. Well, you know, you all got to be involved in the process, Mr. Noble being involved.
Mr. Noble and I can, I think, can work on this and get this to you in about two weeks.
And you know, do you know who the people are? I mean, I got to imagine it's a small universe of companies bidding on this.
It is limited, yes.
And their chief serving on these assessment centers, and I suspect you know a lot of the names as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine.
You said you'd served on one at one point, right? Didn't you serve?
Yeah, I am certified to do that, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm, whatever you are comfortable with, gentlemen, I think the chief and Mr. Noble can keep this moving quickly, but keep us in the room, certainly.
Talk about, talk about it with the chief when it comes, when the three come in, and talk about it, and then just, like Mr. Cabral said, just shoot out to the board numbers and have a little discussion with us, and explain what the process was.
Yes, that's it. Is there a motion to release the RFP for, to solicit bids on the work?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's done. Thank you, chief, and you are obviously an important part of this process, so we'll...
Sure is.
Got you till November anyway, right?
Correct.
Chief, we're going into executive session, would you though?
Yes, I will, stick around.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so next, we've got two members of the Finance Committee seeking reappointment to the Finance Committee, both long-serving members. Bob St. Jean, who serves as chairman, and Bob Ferrera, who's been on for a long time, but both long-serving members are seeking to be reappointed for a three-year term. It's a nine-member committee, I believe eight of the nine spots are filled, it's nice that we've got consistency, it's nice that they both have asked to be reappointed, because I think it's important we have stability on the Finance Committee, so...
We do have an opening?
I believe there's only eight of the nine positions.
One opening on the Finance Committee?
Make a motion to appoint Robert St. Jean and Robert Ferrera to the Finance Committee for a term of three years.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. New business, the Wage and Classification Committee appointments. As we went through this wage and classification process, the conversation was around, how do we, how do we continue this into the future, and the conversation I had with Mr. Noble was, we should appoint a committee that's going to oversee classifications. And, you know, we did, went through and looked at a lot of the classifications initially. There are some, we want to go back and revisit to assure that those positions are classified appropriately, and identified four or five positions that we wanted to spend more time talking about, thinking about. So, we'd like to, for, I mean, forever conceivably, appoint a Wage and Classification Committee. We talked about the Town Administrator, a member of the Finance Committee, and a member of the Board of Selectmen as being representatives on that committee, although it doesn't have to be limited to that group. That seems to be a reasonable size, you know, that, that group will be empowered to make recommendations as to job classifications, will not be empowered to make any wage adjustments unilaterally, so...
Just to go to the board.
It would have to go, yeah, it would have to go to the appropriate board to make, you know, if, if the recommendation was to make a change in classification and grade, that would go to the appropriate board, who would decide whether or not a, a adjustment in compensation is appropriate. But, again, we, it was a big project, we started it, we want to continue it, and, you know, in the, in the short term, we've got a couple of positions that need to be looked at, but in the longer term, we just need to keep this rolling, because this is what we need to do for the employees of our town and to be, and to be fair.
All right, right now?
And to comply with the law.
Right now, is that my understanding, that the Select Board is in charge of this? I mean, as it stands right now?
Yes.
You know, as it was adopted, you know, prior to the election? And then, so now we're looking at changing it, or going in a little different direction with it, by, you know...
Not, no, not really, I think even, it, it remains under the, the control of the Board of Selectmen, but, you know, I think there's some work that gets done behind the scenes, not behind the scenes is the wrong word.
Okay.
Wrong word.
Preparation.
You know, it's preparation, there are recommendations that need to be made, and I think the process of making those recommendations, you know, was complicated. I mean, you know, when, when, when Mr. Noble and I did it last time, I mean, we, we looked at each job, we looked at the, you know, 12 metrics that described that job, that described required education, that described work environment, that described number of employees reporting, and, you know, based on each of us independently reviewing those metrics, we came up with a grade for each job, and that's, that's a process that I don't think would work well with the three of us sitting here at this table. I think it's, it's something that would happen in a, I'll call it a subcommittee meeting, and the results of that subcommittee meeting would be presented to the Board of Selectmen or the appropriate board, if it's not the Board of Selectmen, it could be the Board of Assessors, it could be the Board of Health, for their approval of the proposed grade and for their approval of any recommended grade change. And, you know, when, when this says, it's a, it's a, it's a member of the, of the Board of Selectmen is, is appointed to that group, I would, I wouldn't mind continuing doing that, just because I've done, it doesn't have to be me, it could be any of the three of us, that is, the Board of Selectmen rep to that group. And we'd ask the Finance Committee, the Town Administrator's a Town Administrator, we'd ask the Finance Committee to decide who they appoint. I believe Mr. St. Jean's expressed an interest in doing it, but we're trying to, you know, we're trying to have a few people looking, you know, manageable group looking at this, but coming forward with recommendations as to what, as to what classification should be.
No, you're saying you don't think that the Select Board could handle this, is that based on the difficulty that occurred in the initial, you're probably putting this in, into, you know, adopting it?
It's, well, no, we could, I mean, we certainly could.
No, but I'm saying from the past, you know, I mean, now we're looking at nominating a committee, I see if this is a little direction turn, or a, or a direction turn from what was considered a job of the Selectmen to decide, to now a committee, we're giving up this, I don't want to say power, but we're giving the decision-making to other people. And I do understand that is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, it's a recommendation, yes. So we, when we did it, when we did it the first time, we did it as a group in executive session, and, you know, I, it was a big project, and...
It's a process, I understand that.
So we, we started an executive session, and then we moved it into a smaller group. I mean, me and Ms. Noble did a lot of it, we started as a, you know, as a group, and then broke into a smaller group, and came back with our recommendations. So that's, it's sort of what happened before, so I don't think this is really a change from what happened before. I think if there's any change, we're saying, let's add another person to the mix, let's add somebody from the Finance Committee to the mix, and, you know, get one more perspective on, on appropriate classifications. So I don't think this is really that different from what we did before. You know, what we did before is, is, you know, at the last minute, at the scramble last time to get it done, me and Ms. Noble met, we went through a bunch of positions, and then brought those recommendations back to the Board of Selectmen. So that's, it's really the same as what we did before. We couldn't, we found as a, as a group in executive session, we couldn't move it fast enough. We decided to go into a smaller group to keep, to get it done. So I don't think, I don't think we're really proposing changing that dramatically what we did in the past.
Can I speak?
Of course.
So, a couple of those meetings happened without my presence, and it was voted on, the Wage and Classification, which is this sheet of paper where we are compared to 14 other towns. I believe you're familiar with this sheet of paper?
I have it, right in it.
To a degree. The problem that I have is the inaccuracies that are presented on this sheet of paper, first and foremost, because a lot of these positions, the salaries here are inaccurate. Second of all, out of 24 positions that we did, one of them I eliminated, which was Director of Golf, there's 336 boxes that are inside of this little chart with, with salaries inside there. Of that 336, 141 of them are empty, which represents 43% of this wage and classification. So, I don't believe that by forming a committee and handing them off, just, this is one sheet out of a binder that's about that fat, is really going to do any good to anybody. I think that if we're going to be fair to employees, if we're going to be fair to the taxpayers, I think that we need to take a good look at what we've, what this company's created, and refine it a little bit better to fit the needs of the Town of Akushnet a little better. These six, there's six towns within the 14 towns, they're per caper in EQV, in some cases double, some cases triple that of the Town of Akushnet, so I'm not, I'm not so sure why we're being compared to those towns. Some of these towns aren't even in Bristol County, matter of fact, a lot of these towns aren't even in Bristol County. So I think that this board still has a lot of work to do before we move forward with this. I'm surely in objection of this wage and classification, because I don't think it's to be accurate. Matter of fact, I know it's not accurate. There's a lot of positions in here, you might ask yourself, what am I talking about? If you, and I'm going to use, chief, I hope you don't mind, because you're present in the room.
The two of them.
Police chief. So out of the 14, eight of them are blank, okay, for the police chief salary. Fairhaven, blank. Lakeville, blank. Marion, blank. Norton, blank. Rainham, blank. Seekonk, blank. Somerset, blank. I don't understand how we could pay for a study to be done and have all these blank spots to, to give us an inaccurate wage and classification, and I believe that's what this is. I believe it's inaccurate. And in fact, two of the salaries that are on here are incorrect, as far as the chief's pay goes, and they're incorrect by a landslide. We're not talking $5,000 or $10,000, we're talking $20,000, $30,000 in two cases. So there's a lot of misinformation here. I don't think that this is a good template for anyone to be using, including the Board of Selectmen, when people come in for the reclassification.
We did not use those numbers, no.
The process that we used in establishing was as much was recommended by the consultants in preparing the thing, so the initial placements of current employees, which was on page 14 of their, the placement of two or more positions in a certain grade represents a judgment of those positions should be compensated comparatively, the level of blah, blah, blah. So what you basically did in the original, or initial placement, is you looked at the actual wage that the current employee was at, and tried to put them into the classification and then into the step in comparison to where they were currently paid, and where there was a great disparity between where the study thought they should be and where they were, then there was an encouragement to make a judgment whether the classification was correct or incorrect, and then to work towards putting them into the correct classification, whether that meant raising them, and of course, the study says, no place should you cut, because it's not fair to the current employee, but that's in part of the implementation guide, and that's how we did it originally. And what Mr. Gaskor's saying is absolutely correct on that sheet, but it's a guide, a big thing. There's no, unfortunately, there's no identical Town of Akushnet. If we just limited it to Bristol County, picking out towns that had the same EQV would be even more limited. So consequently, nothing's perfect.
I agree, nothing's perfect.
And so the best thing to, to do is the manner in which we did, was the current pay in relation to how they were classified by the study. And then a determination whether the classification was accurate, there was a disparity. And putting them into the steps was the comparison of where they were currently paid in relation to the range of salaries as identified by the study.
With some exorbitant increases that we've done when you placed them into these steps, because the two members of the Board of Selectmen, the company that gave you a grade for the position, two Selectmen voted the wage of classification and decided what step they'd be in. Some employees received an exorbitant raise from the study, and others just received whatever their 2% de cola was, plus maybe a percent, percent and a half, because that's where they would fall within the step that they were looking at from where their current salary is. I'm not saying the whole thing is worthless. I think that there's a lot of good parts to the wage and classification, but I also think there's a lot of bad parts to the wage and classification.
June of 18. Mr. DeRosa, anything? I've got to respond to Mr. Gaspar's comments, but I'll let you go first.
Okay. We're at a new year right now. I'm a new member on the board. I'm looking to work together with both of you. This has been a political hot potato since I've been watching it six months ago. So now we have a chance to start something new. The Wage and Classification Act has been adopted. I accept it. It's part of my term now. I'm going to have to deal with it for the next three years. Some points Mr. Gaspar bring up are correct. I do think it could be refined. I'd like to be involved, get my fingerprints on it.
Would you like to be the Selectman?
No.
No, would you like to be the Selectman?
No, because I still think the Select Board has a responsibility. I was elected to make decisions in this area. I know it's still a recommendation, with sending out to be recommended. But I think the Select Board, over the next few months, could work together and come up with a refined Wage and Classification Act that all of us are satisfied with as a Select Board. I believe that. Now, if we get into this process, and it looks obvious that we're not going to be able to improve upon what's already been done, then I would be open to considering a committee to follow through and, you know, be able to finish this off. But right now, I'm still hopeful that we could do this together. And I know the past is the past.
What does, what do you think that process looks like though, Mr. DeRosa?
Well, the process, I see it as agreeing upon three areas. So let me just start with the first area, is who are we comparing ourselves to?
Yep.
You know, we agree with some, we disagree with others. So how do we refine that and get it to a point? You had mentioned the, what was the values, what people, like a family of four makes in this town, what households, you know, are worth and that sort of thing, and comparing that. So I think if we refine and come to an agreement, just starting with that, just come to an agreement on what towns do we think we compare ourselves to? Okay? And just take a month and come up with an answer to that question. And if we're still like, uh, we can't agree, well, then we might have to look at, you know, we need to look at having a committee if we're not going to be able to work together with this. But, you know, that's just the one thing. And then, you know, already has been established grades and steps. So it's really just to refine those. You know, I don't think there's a lot of like, ah, you know, we don't know what grade we're at.
Well, there are a few positions we need to look at. There are four or five we need to look at.
And that's correct. I mean, this isn't something I want to tear down, you know, blow up with a hand grenade.
Right.
You know, it's something that I think that's been progressed through a lot of work and, you know, and, but we have it. And what are we going to do with it? You know, and that's, I think, the question. Do we send it to committee? Do we create a committee to deal with it? Or do we work together and get it done ourselves and come to a solution for this?
Well, I guess I'm...
And then maybe form a committee.
I'm trying to, so, let me do, and I'll, back to me, I guess, now. So we've had this study for a year, and we got it last June. And we sat on it for most of that, seven or eight months. We did nothing with it. And I think we did nothing with it because we looked at it and said, wow, there's a lot of work there.
Right.
And then we decided we needed to. We didn't decide we need, we have to. I mean, there's pay equity in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We are required to look at our positions and ensure we are paying the employees of this town fairly, in line with other communities. I think we've got a lot of good information in here, and, you know, there's, and I, that chart's not fresh in my, that chart's not fresh in my head, but I spent a lot of time going through this and getting comfortable with it. And, you know, I think we're trying to move this forward and not go backward with it. So, you know, yes, pay increases were granted. They were approved by the Board of Selectmen. They were approved appropriately. They were approved by a majority vote. They were approved at meetings that people could have attended and voted at. And we're just trying to move this to the next step, which is to ensure that this moves forward and is implemented. I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying entirely, but what I see with this process is it just never gets done. It just, because it just, this is not something that can happen with us sitting here as a group of three, trying to work through that book in open session. It's something that needs to come, it needs to come back to this group with recommendations being made. And if a recommendation's made to you as a member of the Board of Selectmen that we take a particular position and we make it grade this, step this, that doesn't need to be voted on at that point in time, we can leave this meeting as Selectmen, say, I don't want to consider that now. I'd like to take that out, come back in two weeks. And in two weeks, I will do the research I want to do on that position and come back with my comparable towns and tell you whether or not I support that proposed change. But it's going to, it's going to get us focused on individual issues, on individual positions. I think if we go down the path you're suggesting, I don't think the task becomes manageable as a body of three sitting here in open session trying to do it. I really don't. I just, and I think it goes back to where we started, which is eight months of us not doing anything. And once it was time to do something, we got it done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And we're just trying, and again, I don't, I don't object to, I don't object to appointing you as the Board of Selectmen representative to this committee. I don't object to appointing Mr. Gaspar as the Board of Selectmen representative to this committee at all. I mean, whoever wants to do it is, well, it doesn't need to be me. This needs to move forward. And I think, I think the plan of not moving it into a committee, of trying to tackle it as a Board of Selectmen, it doesn't go anywhere. And we've got a lot of things, and this body's got a lot of things that, that we need to move forward, not just some. And I could list them if you want, but this is one of them. I think we need to move this forward and get it done. And, you know, again, either of you are welcome to be the Board of Selectmen representative to committee. It doesn't have to be me. It doesn't have to be me. But let's do something with this, guys.
I think that pay equity is something separate outside of the wage and classification.
No, it's not.
So we need to find out a little bit more about what he's lost.
No, it's not. It is, it is, the wage and classification study is pay equity. It is. They're not two different issues. They're the same issue.
So are you saying Marion's paying somebody $100,000 in the Town of Akushna, it's paying him $70,000? We have a problem?
Pay equity is comparing similar positions within the town, similar grades, comparing men and women doing similar jobs and making sure they're compensated fairly.
Okay, I understand that. That's the way I interpret the law as well. So this is comparing all the towns.
But we're trying to, but we're trying to keep good employees.
Aye, aye.
As well, that's part of it. It's keeping good employees.
Talking about that whole Exodus thing, some other times, Cabral, but for the sake of this discussion, pay equity has nothing to do with the wage and classification unless we're working internally, okay? So they're supposed to give us this, the company's already given us grades, and then it was our responsibility to take where that grade for that employee, where their recommendation of is where this person's supposed to be. Let's just use the police chief again. Grade 15. So they put that in grade 15, okay? And then we have a line item where his salary is X, Y, and Z, and we look for it and say, okay, we're putting you at, say, it's step six. And there's nine steps within it, and he's in the middle, you know, so call it step five to be more in the middle, okay? That's where we placed him. However, in some positions, we didn't do that. We took some people and said, well, let's open this up, and where are they according to the average? Well, we need to bring that one up a little bit, and that's what you did. And I don't think that was good for the town. I think you created a morale problem with some of the employees. And I spoke to some employees about this, and they're very upset about this because some people receive 5%, 6%, some 20% raises, okay? And others receive their 2.5%, you know, 2% cola. In fact, we did it, and there was a position that stands out. We have a new hire that got a 5.7% raise because of this wage and classification that's been here for three months, but yet we have an employee that's been here for 21 years, and she got a 3-point-something percent raise. You think that was fair? We talk about pay equity and things of that nature. That's what we don't know. I think there was mistakes made, and nobody's recognizing where the mistakes were made. So why wouldn't we have further discussion on how we're going to implement this 40%, 50% done wage and classification and say, do we, do we agree that we should be compared to five of these towns that their EQV is triple what the Town of Akushna is? They can afford to pay more money. They can afford to pay more money, Mr. Cabral. We can't compete with certain towns. We can't compete with certain towns. So let's do our best to be responsible to the taxpayers and our employees to say, let's find eight communities, whatever it is, six, seven, eight communities, like we always do in union negotiations. The unions bring us six communities and say, these are the communities we're being compared against, and you look at it and you say, okay. And then you go find the indifference, say, well, this is the reason why I believe you're not at the right number, and this is what it is, and that's what's called negotiation. So I think that that's what we need to do.
What I'm giving you tonight is the opportunity you were given in the past. The opportunity you were given in the past was the opportunity to lead this. You were given the opportunity to stand in front of this and lead it, and you did before what you're doing right now. Your answer's no, I don't want to move this forward. I want to say no.
That's not true.
That is very true.
I'm saying what's fine communities, what's represented.
What do you want to do?
What's fine? I just told you.
You don't want to do anything. Is what, you, this will, this will go nowhere on the path you've, you had the opportunity to lead this last year.
So I wrote a few things down, okay? Let's, let me read a few things, okay? What is EQV? Total taxable base, i.e. residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. EQV calculation is the value of property in a town divided by population. Comparable, you know what the word comparable means? Meaning more like than unlike. What do we have here? We have more unlike than we have like. This is not a complete study. I'm saying that we can use parts of this study, but let's not just go ahead and give this to a committee that has no idea what the hell they're staring at, and they're being led by Mr. Noble to make decisions that they're not comfortable.
They'll be led by you. I nominate you to lead that committee. Lead us. Lead, follow, get out of the way.
Right.
Lead, follow, get out of the way. Because all you are is in the way. Lead. Lead. Mr. DeRosa.
You are a comedian.
So I'm willing to lead. Are you willing to lead this committee?
I don't think he's comfortable forming a committee. That's what he just said to us.
You're not either.
Well, see, this is the dynamics I was talking about. I was hoping we can get past this kind of situation.
And continue to do nothing. Okay.
That's not my point. That's not my point. My point is, is to work together. Because I've seen this, and this is going to just keep reoccurring through my next year, and I'm going to be listening to my fellow Select Board debate this issue and debate it and debate it. And we have a foundation. It's been adopted.
And we're looking to, and we're looking to implement it and move forward.
You know, I think, I think part of the problem was when this was started, I really believe this, that the Board of Selectmen was never consulted by this company. Now, they went to all certain department heads and certain employees and everything else, but they never came and sat with the Board of Selectmen and says, what is it that y'all looking for in this study? Okay? If that would have been done, I would have told this company, I want comparable towns, not similar towns, whatever the hell that's going to mean to them, because that's what they wrote in that book or whatever Mr. Noble keeps references, and I didn't bring my book. But I got a whole bunch of things highlighted that's a lot different from this company doing it for us from other companies, because I've studied other companies that have done it for other towns, and it's a lot different what they've done.
This is the company that does it for all of the towns in the Commonwealth. How many towns and communities?
Done it for 123.
They've done it for 123 communities.
It's not for all of them, no. That's what I'm saying, too. They consulted, so other people have consulted with the Board of Selectmen, where the Board of Selectmen are in towns, okay? But we were never consulted. And if it was, I would have brought a little bit more to the table, and I would have told them, the population, population matters, I got to write it, income per capita EQV, okay? It's real simple. If you, if you just look at the basics of a community, population, income per capita, and EQV, they would have understood that, they wouldn't have used six out of the 14 communities. They would have said, well, that's not what they want. They don't want me to use Marion, that's three times richer than the Town of Akushna. I don't, I don't understand. We don't have Free Town, we don't have Rochester. We didn't use Free Town, we didn't use Rochester, but yo, we use Marion, that's three times richer than the community.
Last chance, last chance. Share the subcommittee, fix it.
I think Mr. DeRosa wants something different, and he wants the Board to come to a conclusion on what communities we're going to use moving forward.
Who's going to lead us in that effort? You want to lead us in that effort?
I think that's the Board that we should put, you should look at communities and say, what communities? If you're happy, I'm happy with some of these communities. I'm just not happy with all of them. And if you're going to give this piece of paper for people to look at an average, this average is skewed by a landslide. And I don't think that anybody in the Town of Akushna wants to start raising salaries $25,000, $30,000 for each employee, because that's what Joe Schmo's doing in Timbuktu. I don't think that's the case, and with our taxpayers, I really don't. I'm trying to represent the taxpayers the best I can, and I understand there's going to be circumstances where we will need to raise the salary of some positions. But let's make it a rational process and an explanation to the people, not just do it in the back room.
Will you lead us in that process?
Give us $20,000. I would like the Board to first figure out...
Okay, so now let's move on.
That's not true. I'm not, I'm not done talking, and you want to be rude, then just sit here by yourself and conduct your meeting, Mr. Cabral.
I'm the chairman of the committee.
Whatever. Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter who you are. We're free Selectmen, okay? And let us figure out what communities we want to use, okay? And that's what we go after, and that's what we use as a template.
You'll report back to us next meeting with those comparable communities?
If you don't want to partake in that, then Mr. DeRosa can do it, and I can do it.
Okay, please. All right, so two weeks we'll have comparable communities, the two of them for two weeks? Four, eight, 12, 16?
This policy has been adopted. Why are we already making tweaks to it?
We're looking at a couple of positions that, we're looking at a couple of positions that, four or five positions that we believe may not be classified correctly.
You already did that, though, because when, when we got this, there was question marks and you had people's grades, and that already tells me that, okay, so we got a study, but we don't believe in what the company did for us and grade in these people. I have, I have the documents to prove it. There's question marks right there. Those question marks were put there for a reason. I'm sure the company's not going to submit grades to us, saying, this is where these people belong, and then somebody creates a document, duplicates a document, puts question marks within their grades going, well, I'm not so sure I agree with that company, but But it was okay for them to do it, but when a selectman's sitting here trying to explain that to you, Roger, you don't want to accept it.
No, you questioned some of the grades. When we were sitting, you questioned some of the grades.
We did a grade, Mr. Cabral, and it was five steps below what the company graded. So that should have raised the red flag.
We did it. When we got back, we said, why don't you sit down with Mr. Noble and figure it out, and figure out why that's wrong, and that didn't happen.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that there's a lot of good inside the wage and classification, but there's a lot of bad as well.
So let's just stick it on a shelf for Mr. Noble.
We'll figure out.
Let's move on. We've got some employment agreements that are proposed, continuation of some that, for the most part, they're agreements that have been in place in years past. We've got one new agreement for the DPW business manager, and they're not really contracts, they're wage agreements, which outline the employee's pay scale, which outline number of vacation days, sick days, et cetera, et cetera. And these are the form of agreements that we've used in years past, and we're just looking to refresh them based on compensation levels that have already been approved for the 2020 budget year.
Mr. Chairman, are we on new business or?
We're on new business, item two. We're skipping past the wage and classification committee appointment.
Oh, yes, but as far as the actual contracts, I'm looking at them.
Yep, the contracts were distributed.
Uh huh. So I don't know if this makes you feel any more comfortable, because I guess anything I say doesn't make you feel more comfortable, but I've reviewed all the salaries to the fiscal year 2020 budget, and I'm happy to say that they are all correct. The only thing that the board wants to keep in mind is Mr. Noble changed the fiscal year 2020 salary numbers because of a leap year, or some moon year, or some.
Maybe a leap?
Something like that. So it raised the salaries above and beyond what they were supposed to get.
But that was built into the budgets when we brought the budget to town meeting.
This is calculated to the budgets. It's not next year. When you do them, that's going to fall back.
It would change.
Correct.
This is based on a 52.486 year.
Right, it was another half week or so.
Correct. So, I mean, that would change obviously next year.
The only thing I have to add, Mr. Chairman, is the signature on the first one is the old selectmen that needs to be changed before we sign.
Yeah.
Other than that, I make a motion to approve.
They should be signed by the current selectmen.
I can shake that.
Selectmen that aren't here anymore, that would be appropriate.
Aye, second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New business, item three. Police chief is anticipating a vacancy in a sergeant position, and would like us to go to civil service to call for a test to replace that sergeant.
Right, so the sergeant that you're going to replace will be the sergeant that replaces me. So that's part of the process. So it does not necessarily have to be done tonight, but we're looking at starting that process. One of the other things that we have coming up is that by mid-June, if we're going to call for another sergeant's list, so that way we have candidates on the list, you need to consider something. So under the current system, when we hire a sergeant, we take them off the civil service list, which is test-driven only. Now, we do have three qualified candidates that I would be more than happy to appoint and recommend, and the list that we currently have is good for 18 months. So if you want to continue hiring sergeants in the same manner, you would call for the list and you would add names to it. Those names would be added probably this time next year. However, where we're going to an assessment center for the chief's position, and the process can take up to six months, I'm recommending that maybe we might want to consider setting up an assessment center, not for this sergeant's position, but for the one following that. And the reason for that is, is if we take the test every year, there's a cost to my staff to take that test. And they go and they sit and they receive training, which is all out of their pocket. By going with an assessment center for all promotions, one, we're in the practice of doing it. So that way, when we replace the next chief, it's a little bit easier, because it won't be every 10, 15 years.
So question, does this anticipate one of the sergeants becomes chief and replacing that position? Is that what this does?
Well, you don't, you don't have to call for that. What we're talking about is calling for the sergeant's exam. So if you call for the sergeant's exam, which we have to do by mid-June, if we want to keep an active list beyond the 18 months that we have now, we would call for the list. I actually call for this every year, may not realize it, because we want to always have an active list that you can get somebody from, just in case of an emergency. When you think about it, if the chief or one of the sergeants is, leaves work on short notice for whatever reason, it would be difficult to replace them if we didn't have an active list. So out of a normal course of business, I ask for this test every year. That's what we're talking about right now. You do have three candidates on the list that took the test, passed the test, which is a difficult thing to do. And you're going to ultimately call for a list from HID, which is going to contain the three individuals.
That are currently patrolmen.
That are currently patrolmen. And they're going to replace the sergeant that ultimately replaces me.
Okay.
Follow me so far? All right. Do we want to continue this process where the chief calls for this exam every year, so that way we keep an active list? Or do you want to switch the way we do things? Make civil service work a little bit better, a little bit easier for the town?
What do you recommend?
What I'm recommending is that we go to an assessment center moving forward.
So not just, more than just the test, and more than just the grade, similar to what we're doing with the chief's position?
And then this way, people are in the habit of going through the process. It's going to be a little bit easier for the board for every promotion hereafter. And then this way, we get in line, or line, and then we follow that consistency, that intellectual consistency from start to finish on this process. It's just, I think it would make it a little bit easier for the police department, and the board, and the town to kind of go with one process. And I'm just bringing up the fact that we normally call for this test, normally call for it at this point this year. And if you want to continue with the two separate processes, we can. But if we're going to do that, then we have to call for the exam.
But it feels like you don't want to, you don't suggest we do that, no?
This will be the first year that I don't want to call for it. However, I do call it, you are the appointing authority. You actually call for it, I just bring it to your attention yearly. So I'm bringing it to your attention. I'm recommending that we don't do that. Again, if the next chief decides that, you know, they want to do something differently, maybe that chief should address the board.
So I got a little confused. So I apologize, just because of the discussion that we previously had sometimes takes my thoughts away a little bit. So we always do this every year, right? We call for the sergeant's exam.
Yes.
So we have, and you say that that, once they take the exam, and I know we just had three go through the sergeant's exam in the past.
We have three that passed the test, but we had, I think, eight people take the exam. So what I'm saying is that if we go with an assessment center next time, all eight people will be considered. We would hire an outside consultant to narrow the list down to three, and all eight people would be part of the process from the beginning.
The list we've got now, we've got good names on it. Will those names be good through December?
Those names will be good for about 18 months. So you're going to have enough.
From when, from last year?
Nope, 18 months from today. So you're going to have an active list to replace me, and then to replace the sergeant. So you're good. And you're going to be good.
Without a new test?
Without a new test. I'm just bringing up that I normally ask for this at this time of the year. You're the appointing authority, you normally call for it. I'm recommending that we don't call for it, that we just let it slide, and then start a process intellectually, start to finish, for all promotions to be the same.
Okay. So you don't want us to make any motion to call for the sergeant's exam now?
Right.
Okay. And because we have three qualified individuals that have already passed the exam, we're all set for the slot that's going to need to be filled once we find the next, promote within to the next chief.
Right.
So we'll have that one slotted, the next chief, or you will come in at that time and say, I think we need to get the assessment center going for the sergeant's exam again, and.
Right, that'd be probably down the road when we have a sergeant that, in all likelihood, is going to retire in the next two and a half years.
Correct.
So when that sergeant retires, we would then do another assessment center for that position. Again, that opens the opportunity for probably eight people to experience it. Those eight people will go through it, and then as they move up the ranks, they've all experienced it, they've all participated, they know what to expect. It reduces that anxiety that, you know, the poor guys are going to have going through something new right now.
So it sounds like no action is the recommendation? That we just?
That's what I'm recommending. It's your decision.
I respect your opinion. Gentlemen, anything else?
I'm willing to accept the chief's recommendation.
Yep. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Department of Public Works, nothing. Town administrators report, Mr. Noble.
Certainly. I received a request from the chairman to look at the hours at the highway garage for the highway barn, for.
Except Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday hours, thank you. Currently, the facility closes at 2:00 on Saturday.
2:30.
And.
2:30?
Yeah, I apologize, I got 2:00.
2:30.
So I spoke with the DPW business manager, and what it will cost to extend those hours. Assuming we only did it March till October, it'd be about no more than $3,300.
Can I come?
Yeah, please.
So this was a resident recommendation, and it's something I've lived myself. You know, we talked about the bulkier item pickup, and how, you know, we got to provide services to the residents. I mean, my personal experience is, I work all week long. I come, I get up Saturday morning at some point, I cut my grass, I rake leaves, I throw it in a bag, and I got to get over to the DPW barn by 2:30 before they close. And 2:30 sometimes is, most of the time, it's just not convenient. You're right in the middle, you're right in the middle of it, and you get there and it's closed, and you've got bags full of stuff, and you can't, you can't get it in. It just feels like on a Saturday, and I would, you know, trade Friday hours for Saturday hours if it saves us time, but it just feels like we should keep that facility over, open for residents. Residents are all getting, for the most part, getting the stuff done on Saturday, and if you can't get it to the DPW barn by 2:30, you've got to hold it to the following Saturday and keep it somewhere.
Friday, they're open Friday, but.
They're open Friday, but I work on that.
Yeah, no, I understand. I wouldn't cut any hours. I think you need to.
Yeah, they're only open twice, Friday and Saturday.
You're saying keep it open Saturday until 5:00?
Until 5:00.
5:00?
5:00.
So. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. My question would be, is because they're union, has that been agreed upon by the individual?
I haven't pursued this, other than costing it out. So we'd have to go, I'd have to go back to the DPW and ask, okay, now, if I've got your approval, we'd like to do it. And then we'd have to obviously talk to the union.
And just, you know, I suggested this to Mr. Noble, I'm, you know, this is, I'm not sure that this rises to the level that it's something we need to vote on necessarily. It's providing services to the resident, provided we've got the money in our budget, provided we can work the union. It's acceptable to the union, provided we can staff it, but it just, it feels like something we should do, and it's not a 12-month deal, it's a March to October, maybe, or early November, or, and then we, and then we shut it down.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, I think it is something that the board should be boarding on and discussing as we are right now. And I think that it's going to take some discussion with the employee. I don't know if you're going to find an employee that wants to be there until 5:00 on Saturday. So if we can, I agree, I think it's something that we should discuss. Because I've gotten numerous, I guess, complaints, I'll call it, right? That we're not open late enough on Saturday. And there are a lot of times where I'm getting through the gate at 2:25, and, you know, the whole mess isn't picked up, but I got to go, and this is what I'm ringing, and I'll take the rest next week, and that kind of stinks for everybody. So I'm in favor of it, I surely am, but I just, I think that ultimately it's going to be a union issue that we're going to have to discuss.
All of those things are legit,